I think maybe ever.
No, not on the dais anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, Merle's calling in.
Wow, this is the smallest group I've ever done. Okay, are we ready?
Small script we can't.
Okay. Um. Good evening. Let's call to order the special council meeting, closed session of November eighteenth, twenty twenty five at four thirty one. Um. Do we have anybody? No?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay, okay. Um, the city does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. The council meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means council can regulate the time, place and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by council. If a speaker's comments are not related to the agenda item, the presiding officer um will rule the speaker out of order. The speaker will not be ruled out of order because the disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the um council agenda. Use the show captions button um to view captions on Zoom. Following the closed session, the joint study session with the board and commission chairs and vice chairs will begin at five thirty P M, followed by a regular council meeting at seven P M. We encourage the public to stay tuned and participate in the study session and regular meetings. City clerk, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Klein.
Present.
Vice Marisol.
Present.
Council member Sisneros. Council member Mellinger.
Present.
Council member Srinivasan. Council member Chang.
Present.
Council member Lei. Full present with council members Sisneros, Srinivasan and Lei absent.
Um council member Srinivasan excuse absence, council member Lei excuse absence, council member Sisneros excused absence. Members of the public will now have the opportunity to address the council on closed session items. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Raise your digital hand now um or dial star nine on the telephone to indicate you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers have um one minute to speak. Um do we have any I uh we don't ha- do we have any speakers in the audience?
I know Vice Mayor, we have no speakers in the room nor online indicating a desire to speak on the closed session items.
Okay, so um. Oh, just adjourn. Do I have to read the items? Nope. Okay. So I will uh close public comment. Uh council will now adjourn to closed session. See you back here at five thirty.
Wait, yeah, I don't have it. Just go in between or that goes.
In between the two.
First actually go on the cable. I think.
Is that what he was doing is this? Is that a mini amplifier?
Amplifier. No, I see, but that's a full level, so it has some quality. Yeah, I mean, I.
I remember it.
Okay.
So the county election. They had two people and then they're going to have runoff?
Yes, so.
Well, yeah.
What they do is if. First, if one of the people that got fifty percent or more, more than fifty percent of their votes, they would be allowed. But either no one that's got a warrant or the, or the, that they were on.
The police want to go. The police do.
They're same people, they're going to have a lot.
So with the voting half on the week. A lot of expenses. That's so crazy. Wow, I just no idea because I heard N B all the country. For this, for vote in company.
Oh, council.
What did you have, um, how do I?
So individual council. Council, so.
Uh, because I. Didn't. And for something. Then the food.
See.
Of individual.
So you, you need to have this one good seat. All seven of those people as a person. Council.
Then that's something together. Up in the last, I, I just got you. So I might find the bill over. In June. It will be on the first month of March. I'm gonna shoot.
Not too. So you want to have like. I, there's a step in order. Or. Process, so. Or. There you go.
Oh yes, when I joined in the program.
The under.
It's like I have no idea what it is and I, I. That's what I mean, I don't know what I spoke under.
You don't have to. But if you'd like to. Alright.
You guys out of there?
Yes.
There are loads more hanging out there and then they're.
Why do I have something from the office of the, of the annual report?
It's okay, so, all you can see anywhere.
I don't know, I still have.
No, that's okay.
There's spots for you, I don't imagine all from.
Hey, we can hope.
Hello.
Yes.
A little bit.
It's still a busy day. Not as busy as today has been, but. It was, I didn't see them. But it was basically. Meeting people. Yeah, yes, exactly. Hopefully I get a break sometimes. Hopefully this meeting doesn't go like.
That's what it's going to be. Linda.
I'm, I'm. Alright.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Then it's something. Or backseat.
When I think like.
I'm Jeff.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just.
Also go on the.
I mean, so I see, yeah.
Okay. I've been studying.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, that was. You guys said that a lot. We did a lot. Yeah, we're true. So are you starting to go any time? First game. Okay. No. No, bro. He's back and she has.
I mean, that should.
I don't care. Okay. Uh, no, I. I appreciate. So you know, purpose. When's your first one table? Or decided. Yeah.
Monday.
Okay.
Monday means.
Oh, I know. Yeah. You guys have a lot to work. I didn't make it, I didn't make an effort. The last one.
Yes, you'll see.
Yeah.
But you are.
Yeah.
How many, then he goes on?
Uh, I. Oh, sorry, you guys. You guys. Sorry, I just did. Anyone over here?
Unless you want to listen, Mary.
It is. I mean, it's. We go share there. Yeah, sure. You too. Where are you? Yeah, another boat. All back there and I'll. I'll do it.
I know.
Jeff.
Okay, I don't.
Yeah, right. Okay. I've been. But. Yeah.
Then you have.
Uh.
Now, just looking.
A little bit more. Yeah, I think. Oh. So I'm.
How long?
Yeah, I. My first one. Forty-five minutes. Nice, I had one. The last one, but it was great.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Yeah. Yeah. I like. On the. Yeah.
And maybe. I didn't.
Well, but it's all the way over there.
And that's.
Unless, yeah.
But that's not the thing.
I want to. They all.
People, I mean. Anything else.
I got somebody. Go on. So we got.
And then we say.
You know what I might just do is say, oh, Larry, hi. Good to see you.
I am.
Uh, I can. I can.
Content.
But I can't. I can't.
Okay.
Buy a little so hot. Hey, how are you?
I just.
Uh, yes, I do. How are you? That's. Hey.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, for nothing. You're testing. Yeah. I didn't actually. They were talking. Yeah, I didn't. They didn't.
No.
There's. Yeah.
You have. Yeah.
And this. And.
Off you. Now. Back to. You know, there you go.
Yeah.
This.
The rest, they're the same.
That's. The match.
Uh, they. Red, green.
But it was so.
Yeah.
Yeah, man, he was sitting.
They did so much. Didn't they? That's wrong.
I think that's.
Yeah. But no, we don't go back. Yeah, they. And we, and so we got over. I'm. Some kind of job. But. I'm. Like. Guys got.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm.
Yeah. I.
I forget. Sir, I said.
I'm. Yeah.
Want to see this. Your dislocation.
It's a little.
I favorite. Also then. These favorite seats. Yeah.
That's very.
Oh, okay.
No, I swear to God, I. For a month, I felt like I was. I never actually, yeah. Right, but it's just like.
I know.
It's just not easy, you just always. Little bit. I mean, he doesn't get hazard tag.
Evening, let's call it over the joint study session with the board and commission chairs and vice chairs. Uh, the meeting of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty P M. Uh, the city does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Uh, this council meeting is is considered a limited public forum, which means that council can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda items being considered by council and the, uh, board and commission chairs and vice chairs. Um, if a speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule that speaker out of order. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the council agenda. Scan the Q R code on the screen, um, or click the language access and translation link on the council agenda to read and listen along in more than sixty different languages. Use the show captions button to view captions on Zoom. Following the study session, the regular council meeting will begin at seven P M. Uh, first up, uh, city clerk, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Klein.
Present.
Vice Mayor Sel.
Present.
Council member Cisneros. Council member Mellinger.
Present.
Council member Srinivasan. Council member Chang.
Present.
Council member Lei. Full present with council members Cisneros, Srinivasan, and Lei absent.
Thank you, and please note that, um, those absences are excused. Uh, council member Srinivasan is, um, should be joining the meetings, he's just landed in Salt Lake City and should be joining the meeting, uh, relatively soon. Um, moving on to our study session item twenty-five dash zero one nine six, is there a staff report?
Yes, mayor and council members, this is David Carnehan, the city clerk. Um, council meets annually, uh, with board and commission chairs and vice chairs to review and improve effectiveness of board and commission meetings. Uh, in several years, there were a number of changes that were made operationally and some policy changes. There's two outstanding items from past joint study sessions. One is preparing a role-playing training for, uh, new board and commission members. Uh, this would be, uh, take place as part of new member orientation, uh, once developed. And the other item that is still queued up for follow-up, uh, as time permits, is cutting together, uh, highlights of parliamentary procedure. Now, uh, great use, great examples of parliamentary procedure usage in Sunnyvale. And then there was a recent change to, uh, sort of the overall policy planning for the organization for the city of Sunnyvale, and that was changing, moving away from study issues and budget proposals to a new council priority projects, uh, prioritization process. And so, uh, there was a change in the boarding commission policy, council meetings policy, and the study issues process turned into the council priority projects process. So what this effectively means is, you know, there's a little bit less of a year-round for boards and commissions to play in the policy prioritization process for the future. Um, but there is still a role to be played for boards and commissions in the council priority projects process. And then, uh, later on, uh, during tonight's meeting, uh, council is going to consider a number of policy changes. One of them would be a change to the council policy on boards and commissions related to the council subcommittee. Um, the, uh, proposed change would expand the scope of the committee, the subcommittee beyond, uh, bi amendments, and it would replace a standing committee with an ad hoc advisory committee. And the, the reason, the two reasons for these proposed changes, uh, one is this aligns more closely with how the city has been using that meeting body, it doesn't meet necessarily on a regular cadence the way, uh, other council subcommittees like the, uh, uh, neighborhood grants, uh, subcommittee. And also, right, having a broader scope, um, with the ad hoc video, uh, ad hoc committee would make it a little easier to meet on as needed basis. Uh, and then, of course, any changes to the policy or other, uh, policy-related parts of boards and commissions would be referred to the full council. Um, and then the staff recommendation for that item will be to make those changes. Uh, some topics that we would, uh, you know, potentially be considered, um, by the council subcommittee, uh, in the future and in twenty twenty-six, ideally, you know, early in the year of, uh, either with a continued subcommittee or an ad hoc advisory committee would be, uh, looking at the excused absences provided for boarding commission members and potentially adding religious holidays or religious, uh, observances as an excused absence justification. Uh, potentially adding a limit on the number of excused absences boards and commission, boarding commission members could have. Uh, looking at ways to potentially add additional youth representation on boards and commissions. Uh, looking at, uh, maybe adjusting the scope of this annual joint study session. Uh, maybe holding this biannually instead of every year. Uh, and then there may be some changes that are, we want to explore, uh, in relation to a change in the Brown Act, uh, imposed by Senate Bill seven oh seven. Uh, a number of those things in the, in that bill pertain mostly to city council, but some also applied to boards and commissions, and there was a few pieces where there was kind of choices for council, and we might want to discuss those with a, a subcommittee before having a, a conversation with the full council. And, uh, we would, uh, potentially look at the scope of work for each building commission to see if it, uh, still aligns with the city's needs. Uh, and then, uh, maybe looking at, uh, different guidance for the level of detail and what's included in meeting minutes. And, uh, with that, you know, any, uh, policy changes that are discussed, uh, could be considered by city council or recommended to the subcommittee. Anything of an operational nature will be discussed with the city manager to ensure that staff capacity exists to implement and support any operational changes. And then with this background, we're ready to hear the conversation and discussion between council and the boarding commission chairs and vice chairs.
Thank you very much. Um, first up, were there any questions from council to the, to the city clerk? I think that's the main thing, or to the city manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Is my hand showing up?
Yeah, it is now, thank you, sorry, council member Mellinger.
Uh, briefly, the suggestion on changing the meeting cadence for this meeting. Remind me, biannually means every other year or twice a year?
It means every other year.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Thank you. Um, Vice Mayor Sel.
I had a question, I was mentioned that, um, we might consider, um, uh, the composition having a youth representative, is that what we would do? Tonight, we would decide that, or is that like, you know, suggest that and then, uh, uh, we look into it in the next year?
If it's something council would like staff to explore, we would look into it and meet with, uh, the council subcommittee to discuss in more detail. There's some nuance, right, between the charter created boards and commissions and then the, uh, ones that were created by council via ordinance or resolutions, there's different amounts of flexibility for what council could incorporate, um, based on how each boarding commission was created. So if, you know, if council members have interest in that, I think it would be great to hear what your visions might be for how that could work, um, to help inform a future discussion.
Okay, and then we would do that after we hear a public comment and the commissioners and everything, right?
That would be an appropriate time, yes.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you very much, that's all the questions from council. So, um, while we're here, meeting here tonight, it's, it's to hear from the chairs and the vice chairs and, you know, your concerns and from a, from a process standpoint, trying to get a better idea on, you know, things that you would like to see and, uh, definitely, the, the subcommittee looks at, you know, things from last year and, and trying to incorporate that in the overall policy. Uh, you, you saw several of the, the items from the presentation, um, and if you have comments on those, um, this is really partially your meeting and, and, you know, what hearing from you I think is, is critical, so, um, with that, uh, indicate with your hands if you want to speak. Um, I might forget whether or not you're chair or vice chair, but, um, whoever wants to speak, I'll, yes, chair, vice.
It's. Talked about. So to bring to this tonight, uh, the commissioners had no items, but subsequent to the meeting, I came up with a few that I'd like to share. So the first question is, I'm changed, uh, the study issue process by me. Exactly how it's going to be working, the question. Part of that is to help decrease the amount of time staff has to spend, uh, to cause study issues, so my first question is, are we sure that we have staff to do things to be done, is my first question. My second question was council members, uh, as you mentioned, town council. See, can't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does staff want to respond to any of those now? Or, you know, we can, we can go through. I prefer a little back and forth, especially if, if there's kind of follow-ups to a certain degree. Okay. Okay. And also I'll have a few questions later or a few comments later. Next, anyone? Yes, Chair Garnett.
As to the, considering the biannual meeting for this, I would just take into consideration the fact that we do chair and vice chair elections every year. And so if this goes on to a two-year cycle, you might end up having chairs and vice chairs that never end up on this meeting, just something to keep in mind.
Thank you. And on that note, and for me, I do think a yearly cadence is important. My, my question is to, to the chairs and vice chairs is, would this meeting make more sense in May or, or June, conceivably at the end of your term as chair and vice chair, giving suggestions for after, you know, so some of you are, you know, a year and a half, you know, a year of chair, vice chair, and maybe only a few months as chair, but conceivably having this cadence and, you know, a lot of this is history to a certain degree, but, but whether or not a different time of the year actually is also makes sense. And it's not one of staff's questions, but it kind of goes to the cadence of these joint sessions. So I would definitely be, like, like to hear back from you on that. Comments or other questions?
May sounds good. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
I'd also like to add, though, that you might want to, like, having at the beginning of the term allows you to get input from people that are still very fresh in their tenure and are still having the problems and the hiccups of starting that tenure. And so you might, if you do at the end of the term, you may not get that feedback of, like, how it takes to start being chair or vice chair.
Okay. Definitely would like to hear. Yeah, and, and understand, understand that it's, so it is, and the city attorney wasn't able to be here this evening, but she's been working on additional documentation to simplify, you know, from, from a proceeding standpoint, kind of your process and not, sometimes you have, depending upon the board and commission, interesting motions that conceivably have friendly, friendly amendments and, you know, all that, that sometimes it's just a motion, but, but sometimes you have substitute motions and that whole process. Trying to clarify that for all incoming board members, board members as well as the chairs and vice chairs who are trying to run the meetings is something that she's been working on. I gave her feedback a month or two ago, and so that's in the process to, to help all of you and council conceivably better understand kind of the proceedings because we, you know, you're, you're duplicating our proceedings to a large degree, although with not as many items usually. But other questions or comments? And if, oh, Councilmember Chang, if you, sorry.
Yes, sorry. I just had a question about SB 707. If, I think this question's maybe for the city attorney. Does it apply to commissions, the expansion? For more remote participation?
If the city does have the option to apply those teleconferencing rules to different legislative bodies and any of them that do utilize them do need to follow the expanded rules.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Chair Vice asked if we have enough staff to do what we need to do. The answer, I think, is pretty definitively no. I'm not sure we will ever, but we, I'm sure, we are going into an operational year, and I'm sure the City Manager is looking into where we can be upstaffing. The second thing I wanted to say is, while I appreciate the thought of moving this meeting away from November, I would beg with tears in my eyes that we do not move it to May with the budget workshop. I would, literally any other time.
I'm just, you know, June, May.
June.
Okay.
March, April. Literally any other month. Thank you.
Thank you. Going back to the chairs and vice chairs. Yes, Chair Kesting.
I think you guys can hear me. Thank you for having us here tonight. I do appreciate being able to come to this meeting. And just to cut back on the idea of moving it, you know, I, I think it's great right now. I think it works right now, but I could also see it being really wise to have something happen like towards the end of the year, potentially even after the election, potentially you could have like the new vice chair or the new chair coming in with the, the former chair to talk a little bit more about the process. The first time I came to this meeting, I didn't say anything. I didn't say anything at all. I waited until after the meeting was done. I wrote up a whole bunch of notes and I emailed all you guys about what I thought would be a great idea to, to do with the commission. And one of the ideas that we had for the commission was to have a couple of meetings about what we should say at this meeting and the meeting before the meeting, apparently. So we had two, and during those two sessions, we came up with a handful of takeaways. I'm going to start with the part where we had continued interest to hold, by the way, I'm David Kesting, I'm the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. So we want to continue being able to do meetings onsite at city parks. We did that just recently at Las Palms Park, which is the next park up for slate for renovation. And I can't tell you how incredibly helpful that was. We had in attendance for that meeting, I don't know, like probably close to 15, maybe even two dozen people from the public who showed up for it. Vice Mayor Sell was present. It was a really important part of being able to speak to the community about what the Parks and Recreation Department does, what the commission does, and how the public can influence policy moving forward specifically for the parks that are near and dear to their heart. That being said, there were also some issues that happened during that meeting. There was a need for maintaining quorum at the meeting, you know, with some citizens like trying to shout over others about what had to happen, what had to be done. So I, I think we should continue to be able to do that. We should continue to do these onsite specifically for ones that are pertinent to our, our policy, things that are, that are coming up for discussion with the city and with our commission. But we should also be maintaining a quorum and a discipline that's happening at those meetings so that everybody's represented. Furthermore, we talked about a need for, don't lose my place. There was a question about whether or not we should be having as many meetings as we do, though that was a split, you know, some of the commissioners were, you know, concerned that, you know, we have these 12 meetings or 11 meetings every year, and sometimes there's just not enough policy to discuss. But that was kind of hemmed and hawed. Some people were for it, some people were against it. And the flip side of that, I mean, I personally think we should have the meetings that we have, if not more of them. The flip side of that is when we set the agenda for next year, and Mr. Regozza, who's leaving right now, will attest that we have a full slate of items for 2026. So I'm not really sure about that particular policy, but, but that particular part. However, there were commissioners who thought that was a good idea. But getting back to something that's been said previously and getting back to the idea that what's, that's being discussed, well, I guess has already been implemented, was the idea about the study issue process and how that's changing. Everyone at the commission saw the value of having input to City Council on what we thought good policy was. And I think the reason for that is because we deal with the public like directly all the time. They come to our commission on a regular basis with their, their ideas and their concepts, what's good and what's bad with what's going on with the city. And, you know, our commission, over the course of the last five years, has authored something like 35 pieces of policy, 35 studies, right? It's a lot. And I can't tell you how grateful I am for having had the opportunity to partake in all those. And some of those went absolutely nowhere, right? But I can't tell you how many of them implemented change right away, like right away. And, and a lot of the times, the reason for it wasn't because it came up to you guys and then got appropriated for, for, for budgets, it was because people at staff were like, well, hey, man, we can do that. We can take that idea, we can turn it into a concrete result, and we can have that, have that result put into place by the time we have our next meeting. And, and other times, it's been put into place by, by having whoever the, the consigliere for City Council was at that meeting to say, you know, maybe that study issue isn't going to get legs and isn't going to carry over, but I think that we can implement it specifically by doing this other process, such as like slowing down traffic along safety corridors, specifically along park, park lanes, like at Washington Avenue, right? So I think maintaining some kind of quorum where our commissions have access to creating policy, it's, it's something that we shouldn't, you know, just get rid of. You know, I, the ability to sit down and write policy and discuss it at our commission level and then implement it towards City Council is incredibly valuable. And, and I think, you know, maintaining some, some kind of tool for that is, is quite valuable. So with that, I'll, I'll see. Thank you so much for having, having me here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sell.
I had a question for Chair Kesting. So at the council level, we've also streamlined ideas where during the year, we as a council would suggest an idea. Staff doesn't need to create a paper and a write-up. We would just suggest the idea during open comment, and then that idea, there's a streamlined version of it. So I was just wondering, what would you think of a streamlined version of that if the subcommittee figured out a streamlined version for the, for the committees?
So can, can you please clarify, the concept is to, is to have a brainstorm, an idea that happens at the commission level?
It would be something modeled after what we do at council, which is the streamlined version. So the subcommittee would look at what we do at council and kind of mimic that, which is, all we do is, at the, an agendize, we suggest an idea, and then if the majority of the council supports it, then it goes onto a list. And at the end of the year, you know, when we're ranking our end of the year, we look at the list and then we decide if, you know, there is one idea that your commission would champion. And so you would have that list, and then you could look at that list and say, hey, I want to go back to that one or, and debate it at when it's agendized at the end of the year. But I don't know, I was just wanting to get your feedback. What would you think of a streamlined version of something that the subcommittee?
Thank you so much for, for the question. I do appreciate the opportunity to discuss this further. You know, during our last commission meeting, we specifically agendized data collection. We, the takeaway from our entire year was, how does the Parks and Recreation Commission get data usage on parks? Apparently, we just don't have enough of it. Right now, the only way we know how people use our city parks is if they pull a permit, a permit for the field, a permit for the, for the, for the picnic table, a permit for the lights, right? That's the only way we have to track that information, which is simply a huge data blind spot, right? Whatever, how, how do we know how to set the, the goals for, 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 for the project, for new projects at, at the city, at the parks level if we don't know how we're using our parks? Is volleyball that big of a deal? Is badminton that big of a deal? Is pickleball that big of a deal? Well, obviously, we know that's a big deal because people come in for, around for it all the time. However, other parts of the, of this, of how we use parks is, is, anyway, I want to get back to the point that you have. The thing we pushed forward using the method you're talking about was a valid concern, right? Was, was the most important part of, of our last year's takeaway. However, I, I think that having some capacity to discuss and write down ideas, to discuss them at the commission level on a regular basis is, it's something that we need as a commission, and I would hope other commissioners, other chairs here would back me on saying that.
Yeah, so if any of the other commissioners wanted to comment on that, and then at the end, we'll figure out if we should ask the subcommittee to look into a streamlined version so you can discuss things throughout the year, but not put any burden on staff to come up with a write-up and all of that. So it would be a low overhead kind of effort, but allow for discussion. But that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, Chair Beagle.
Could I respond or ask a question?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I wanted to just double-check I understood what you were saying properly. The value you and the commission got out of the study issue process was not even the study issues themselves, it was being able to communicate with them, communicate about the, the problems in the commission environment and then instigate action from them. Like, it sounded like the examples you gave of when thing, policy act, or like process actually changed were from either staff doing something directly or the city council going and pulling some strings, like pulling things behind the, like the scene, as opposed to like having a fully written up and drafted study issue that went through the, through the whole study issue process. Is that how, is that how I should be interpreting what you're saying? Or did you also find value in the actual study issue process itself beyond just being able to discuss the issues?
I, I would say out of the 35 study issues we authored, the ones that actually got funding were, I want to say, like three. However, the value of the study issue process that I see at the commission level was the ability to have a frank conversation about the city's needs and to have the ears of the staff, the other commissioners, and of council when we said it, right? Like Assembly Bill 45, right, which allows city council to set speed limits to whatever they think is appropriate along safety corridors, having, having the, having, having the ear of, of a former Vice Mayor Srivasan at, at the city council meeting to discuss how we should be implementing that along our city parks, because there's no reason whatsoever that anyone should be driving more than 15 miles an hour along a city park street, right? That was incredibly valuable. And, and I certainly, that's, that's what I see as being one of the main tools of that, of that process. Thank you.
And then does the new council priority process, or council priority project process not fill that need in your eyes? Or?
It's, it's so new, I don't even know how we gonna use it, man. You know, I, I, I have complete faith and trust in City Council. I, I don't, like I said at the meeting, I don't envy them with the decision that they had to come up with. But I, I fully expect when, when Mayor Klein said, we need, they need a tool to, to, a lever to pull, we'll still have one, right? I, I, I'm, that's why I'm here right now, to, to discuss it. Thank you for asking.
Yep. And then I'll just say that I give the same value as Chair Kesting out of just the, the study issue process, is just being able to discuss and like have an earnest ear from the staff at the meeting and maybe just hearing, having council liaison hear what we're talking about, I think is really valuable. And I'm not sure the council, the council priority project process will have as much of an ability to do that because it's once per year as opposed to what the previous thing, you could like raise a study issue any meeting and then it would be saved for later at the actual study issue meeting. I mean, it was, it was a way to do it organically throughout the year as opposed to just once at the end of the year, but perhaps the process will still fill that need just at a yearly cadence. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Mellinger, question or?
Thank you, a comment. You know, and thank you very much for the input on this. I think that what's worth remembering here is that the study issue process wasn't really ever intended to drive operational changes. And the way to drive operational changes, changes that do not, it turns out, need a study issue, is to work with the staff liaison, to email council, to email the City Manager. And those are all things that every commissioner and every resident is strongly encouraged to do if they see an area that's in need of improvement. And what I'll also say is having run a few of the board and, a few of the study issue ranking sessions for the BPAC myself, I, I did find that process to be very cumbersome. And what I'm hoping is that with the council priority process, that having a single meeting without the overhead of ranking, but being able for a, a board and commission to say, this is what we're going to put our weight behind, this is the big idea. Yes, you can have that free-flowing exchange and discussion, but ultimately, like, you know, pick one, put it forward. I'm hoping that that can get us something that will still have that channel to council, that ability to drive policy change from a commission level, but a lot more streamlined. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, or Vice Mayor Sell.
I had a question. So currently, on the, an agenda is part of the commission meeting, can a commissioner just say, like Chair Kesting was talking about that law? say, like Chair Kesting was talking about that law, could they just say, this is an interesting law I heard about? And can the other commissioners comment on that? Or would it have to be agendized or at the, in the current process? Or?
If there was any, so everything that's discussed in, to any substantial, substantial level needs to be agendized. So if, if a commissioner wanted to talk about a specific law and have a discussion, it would need to come back for a future meeting.
So in the way that the commissions are set up, it is the ability to say, I'd like to bring this up in a future commission meeting to discuss. And then the other board, the other members of the commission could vote. And then if a majority said, yeah, we would like to see this in a future meeting, and then, and then it would be agendized, is that in the power of the commission right now?
So generally, the council policy on boards and commissions gives the staff liaison authority over the agenda. And the commission, each board and commission does propose a work plan that council approves so that council has an ability to make sure that the boards and commissions and the staff that support them are working policy areas that council would like them focused on. The, you know, the ways for them to request agenda items, they don't have the same flexibility that council has to just direct staff to come up with agenda items and produce work. Because the, you know, the, there's been conversations of, of board and commission members having agenda items that don't require staff work, but realistically there isn't, for a board or commissioned, staff liaison to supply a board or commission without, we can't, even if we're not preparing, the staff will put, the board and commission staff are there to facilitate and help make sure that the meeting is running well. And if we don't know anything about a particular topic, we're going to research it before we support a meeting discussing the topic. I think our assistant city manager has something to add to.
Thanks, thanks. Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that if there is any discrepancy between the staff liaison, the staff liaison and a board or commission, agenda decisions are applicable to the city manager.
Okay. And then, so in mirroring like what we're doing at council, so a council member during the unagendized item sort of section says, I would like, this is my idea for a, a council priority project. And then he sets the idea and then the other colleagues either say, yeah, we support it. And then if a majority supports it, it just winds up on a list. I was wondering if the commissioners, if they chose to do that, is that currently in their power or would that be a sub, the subcommittee would need to examine that if the commissioners thought that was?
Sorry, I'd be clear, sir, before you answer that, we need to check in with Councilmember Srivastan for a statement briefly.
Councilmember Srivastan? Could you please unmute?
Can you give me two minutes? I'm looking for the statement. One second, Mayor, sorry about that.
And we'll pause for just, just a moment.
If, if permissible, we can put Councilmember Srivastan on, back on screen and I could show a statement that you could concur with if it sounds appropriate.
I am ready.
Okay.
Sorry. I am participating remotely in tonight's council meeting under the Just Cause provision of Ralph M Act included in the, in California Government Code Section 54953 J2. And there is, there is no individual 15 years of age or older present in the room at my remote location. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Okay. Back to my question. So is it currently in the power of the commission to, at the unagendized portion, for a commissioner to say, I'd like this idea to be a consideration for our council priority project? And then the other colleagues with no discussion would say if they support it or not support it. And then if a majority support it, then it ends up on the list. And then at the end of the year, the commission could look at the list along with ideas they bring and that, and then that would there be their council priority, you know, pick one for their council priority for their commission. Is that currently in their?
I can take that one.
Do if they wanted to or not?
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor Sell. Sarah Johnson, we have assistant city manager. It's not. Based on the direction that council took on, I think it was October 21st last month to update all of the council priority project processes and the boards and commissions policy, that's, that's not something that's included currently. So that would be something tonight, tonight is to get general input and to identify possible items to refer to the council subcommittee on boards and commissions. So if, if that is of interest tonight, then that would be something that we would refer. In addition to that, we did commit through the recent study issues update that we would periodically evaluate the new process. And so we'll, we'll be planning to do that as well.
I was, if I can make a comment, I was, I was going to actually share that same comment. Thank you, Sarah. That, that, we haven't even let this new process play out yet and we will revisit it. A workaround for what you're suggesting would be if individual board and commission members have ideas that they want to bring to that meeting, they don't have to announce that at some other meeting and get support, they can just bring it when, they can keep a running list on their own and then bring their ideas to the idea meeting.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And just as a secondary thing, you can always bring, you know, your ideas, as many of you have, to council, to different council members, you know, from, from a commission standpoint, it's good to have, you know, share those ideas at your idea meeting and talk about, you know, how they might change and all that. But, but you always can talk to your council members, talk to your mayor about ideas that you have that, and even conceivably how to best frame those from a city standpoint. So, so that was also part of the process to a certain degree. We're, we're, we're here to help not just the residents with ideas, but especially our commissioners who are often subject matters.